All right, good afternoon. I call to order, hi, I call to order the 229th Brookfield Town Meeting. And I would ask everyone to stand in each of these seats.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
And now, in actual moment of silence, I'll hand this people that have passed away in the past year, and in honor of all servicemen and women fighting over seas. Thank you. All right, I'd like to introduce the selectmen. We have the Chair, Rick Sorette, Vice Chair, Rich Zachar, and Ryan Robichaud, not seated in that order. If we have any new town residents that are here today, if you'd like to stand up, say your name and where you live, we'd be happy to hear from you. All right. All right, if there's anyone here who is not a registered voter, please note, it is a misdemeanor to attempt to vote if you are not a registered voter. And before we start, so I don't forget to do this later, I'd like to thank all the town officials, whose terms will be finished at the end of this meeting. I want to do that now, so I don't forget to do it at the end. I'm sorry. And if there are no initial announcements that anyone needs to make? Take that as a no. The rules for this town meeting are on the inside cover of the town report that you probably picked up on the way in. They're also available on the town's website on the moderator page. And I would kindly entertain a motion from the floor to waive any formal reading of the rules. So move, we have a second. It's seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, the motion passes. All in favor, oh, excuse me, excuse me, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Now the motion passes. It's my first meeting, you can't tell me. All right, and remember, there shouldn't be a problem for us. If you're going to speak today, please direct all of your comments to me and not at anyone else in particular. That way we can keep it civil and we can disagree without being disagreeable. All right, now we're going to announce the results of the town election for Tuesday. For selectmen, Ed Gothier with 86 votes. For moderator, James Coles, me, with 135 votes. For trustee of the trust funds, we had a write-in candidate, Susan Weiskie, if I'm pronouncing the last name correctly, with, is it Weiskie?
Weiskie, very good.
Weiskie, all right, got it. With 17 votes. For cemetery trustee, Roberta Holland, with 137 votes. For planning board, Edmund Ingles, with 136 votes. And turning to the articles that were voted on, all of them passed. Article two passed with 104 yes votes and 42 no. Article three passed with 111 yes, 38 no. Article four passed with 116 yes and 32 no. Article five passed with 126 yes and 20 no. Article six, 104 yes and 40 no. Article seven, 104 yes, 42 no. And article eight, 77 yes, 58 no. And last, article nine, 130 yes and 40 no. We will now begin the portion of the town meeting for warrant articles to be addressed today, starting with number 10, which I will now read. Article 10, shall the town of Brookfield accept the provisions of RSA 53-G1 through RSA 53-G11, provided for the establishment of a communications district, together with the municipalities of Albany, Bartlett, Chatham, Conway, Eaton, Effingham, Freedom, Hale's Location, Harps Location, Jackson, Madison, Moldenborough, Osiphe, Tamworth, and Tufton Borough, in accordance with the provisions of the proposed agreement filed with the Brookfield Governing Body, a majority vote is required, and Rich Zachar will speak on this next second. Do I have a motion on the floor?
This has to do with internet service for the town of Brookfield, as well as many other communities in Carroll County. To no cost, warrant article. The focus is drawn together to try to leverage a larger number of providers of service throughout Carroll County. We've got two representatives on the committee. Bailey? Perfect, DeBury and Marshall Goldberg. The town can get out of this agreement anytime we want at the town meeting. The commission cannot raise taxes, they cannot comfort the town in any way, it's just an issue of, let's get together and see if we can bring internet service into the county through larger numbers.
All right, and is there a motion on the floor for this article?
I'm making a motion to accept.
All right, seconded. Seconded, and I open the floor for debate or any discussion on this article. All right. Seeing none, are you ready for the question? I'll take that as a yes. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say nay.
Nay.
All right, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Article 10 has passed. All right, moving to article 11. To see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $200,000 to repair the town's roads, of the amount of $200,000 is authorized to be withdrawn from the road and bridge repair capital reserve fund, majority vote required. Is there a motion on the floor to entertain this article?
So moved.
All right, seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded. All right, and we, that's right, as soon as this.
The sporadic of our road repair, and I said road repair in the general sense of repaving the roads. We had a year where we just could not get a contract out here, so we had, we had twelve years where nothing was getting done. Last year, we were changing road agents, we had a new road agent, and we, except for taking on a paving project midstream, we opted to go ahead and just continue to bank the money, but utilize some of the maintenance funds for the new road agent to go ahead and get some of the infrastructure work done, get a lot of the color work done, ditching, to get it ready for a paving project. So right now we have $200,000 earmarked for this work to be done this spring, we're beginning to get bids. We were working with the road agent, and maybe you consider getting public input on what roads we want to consider taking on. $200,000, we sound like a lot, but the cost of fuel and naming, it'll get us maybe half what we normally would have maybe five years ago. Roads that we considered, right now, the portion of Grand Road towards Wakefield, we consider maybe taking on the portion of Clark on the Wakefield side. We're open to suggestions as well, and we're open for the road agents, who've been, I would have heard a lot the past year, to get us, you know, also isn't where we're, you know, where we might need the work done, is we need a whole road replacement, do we want to shed the road? And do, and also as a town, if we wanted to reach this $200,000, we would need to go ahead and we would need to raise money through taxes this year to make any kind of increase above $200,000.
All right, I'd open the floor for discussion. Does anyone have any comments about article 11?
I'd like to make a comment. The $200,000 that will take me out of the trust funds, takes the trust funds to zero. We're not putting any money into the trust fund this year, we, all, with inflation and cost of material, we can't keep up. The money we put away last year would have given us a half a mile of road, we waited a year, it gives us a quarter of a mile of road this year. So it doesn't make sense to put money away, even loses value. But I want to be clear, we're not, we're not putting any money into the trust fund this year, so the road maintenance budget for next year will, will rate to the tax rate. But that's why we're doing this, so there's a discussion and people know what's coming in the future.
Would you direct the amendment?
Please, yeah, please stand up and say it, say your name.
Australian banks, we need something to carry, you know, the taxes down.
We're not closing it, we're, we've been a little residual left.
Any further discussion on this article? Okay, now seeing any, are you ready for the question? Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, all opposed, say nay. All right, the motion carries. Warrant article 11 has passed. All right, warrant article 12. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $7,000 for the property revaluation capital reserve fund, to be deposited of said sum into the property reevaluation capital reserve fund, majority vote is required. I believe that Rick Sorette will speak on this.
This, this $7,000 for the property revaluation is putting money in the bank for reevaluation that's coming due in 2024. In five years, we do this, reevaluation, and this money is going to pull us out of 2024, reevaluation.
All right, and is there a motion on the floor? Seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded, and what was your name?
Yiggy.
All right, and I open the floor for discussion.
Ed Gothier, can you tell us what how much is in the capital reserve fund that was up today?
The total bill is going to be about $30,000, and we've improved $7,000 in the past three years, so we're now looking at about, I'll say, $21,000, $28,000, with the projected cost of $32,000, $35,000.
Well, those are probably almost, yeah.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? Yes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, the motion carries. Warrant article 12 has passed. All right, warrant article 13. To see if the town will vote to discontinue the cable and internet capital reserve fund created in 2019. Said funds and accumulated interest to date withdrawal are to be transferred to the town's general fund, and again, majority vote required. I believe Rich Zachar will speak to this.
Yes, when we started this fund in 2019, we thought we were, the town was going to contribute something to bring internet into the, into the town. Subsequent to 2019, Freesline signed a contract, Grant tried to put it down to bring the service in, no cost. So we don't see a need for this money anymore, so suggesting we put it back in the general fund and return it to the town.
Right, is there a motion on the floor? And seconded? All right, and I open the floor to discussion on warrant article 13. Yes, please, please stand up and say your name.
I said, haven't spoken in a long time. Harry Wilson Clark Road, one of the second-class events in the community that does not have cable service. Is this going to do anything to alleviate that problem?
No, it's not. What we've done is going to be you and your neighbor, and people on Hubble Down Dick Road that will not have service. We can't make it do it. We talked to Spectrum, and they wanted $600,000 to do Hubble Down Dick Road. They didn't want the work, they didn't want to do the job. Freeside came in and said they'll do the one-on-one corridor at no cost at the town. We took what they gave us for nothing.
And any further discussion? Yes?
Susan Reagan, what's there a monetary amount that will come this?
There's, there's $11,000, $11,811 of that trust right now, down the back, just into the general fund.
I haven't signed this book yet, so, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, are you ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and article, warrant article 13 passes. All right, it's turning to 14, moving right along, to see, I think I'm a way, I'm fixing myself, I'm saying, article warrant article 14, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 to be withdrawn from the townhouse capital reserve fund for the repair of the townhouse windows and interior painting. Again, majority vote is required, and I believe Rick is going to speak first.
This $25,000 of musical charity power, we bring it out every year to do the windows and the painting, we don't get contracts, we put it back in. And it's happening again, we're open to have the contracts, finish for this year, take the money out, repair the windows, and just hold, and finish the painting, it's on the primer on the wall, right now.
All right, and entertain a motion on the floor. So moved, and seconded? Seconded, and open the floor to discussion.
Frank Fraser, live and wrote, is this one includes the recensing, is that in that? So sensing it's going to be an additional cost later on once the thing is done.
Yes, of course.
Okay.
Right, any further discussion?
I guess, so Marshall Goldberg, Brookfield, yeah, Brookfield, that's the right town.
You're in the right place.
I'm in the right place, I'm a resident, so. Just the pink interior here, just this room?
Yeah, residents.
And the windows?
It's the windows, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
It's the windows, the windows are the key, they're the store addition, that's dirty labor intensive, and it's a costly project to restore, to restore these windows to work on, in addition to that, the painting.
The painting that we have right now is under $5,000 at least, the windows are really the crux, I really think, what they're saying is.
So they're going to repair them naturally?
It's a restorationist, yes.
They'll, they'll take them off, redo every one of them, preserve as much of the historic glasses they can, replace them, paint them, reinstall them.
Sounds like a good deal?
Yeah. It's a lot of work.
This is a great idea. We're working on getting an actual contract that the selectmen can sign, because it's called reconditioning, and because our historic preservation building, there are finite details that I've tried leaving and I'm always scared, I think it's so painful, I could, I leave it. So that's, but that's the reason I have advice, because there's reconditioning and there's specific things that I found. Hopefully this year.
All right, any further discussion on this warrant article?
I'll give a second, nobody else, second. I, as I understand it, it's going to include two windows in the vestibule too, it's going to do all the windows in this part of the building, right? Yes, it is. Thank you.
Right, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, are you ready for the question? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, all opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carries, and article 14 passes. All right, and last, turning to article, warrant article 15. To see if the town will vote and raise and appropriate the selectmen's recommended sum of $1,231,078 for the town operating budget. Said sum does not include special or individual articles addressed in this warrant, majority vote required, and I believe Brian will speak to this first.
As the last question, you can refer to the budget within the book here, it's line item, and the budget's also online, it's everything from salaries to cost of day of postage. We, we, I kind of went after two, three months with public input and a public hearing, and we drilled it down to that, that number, which is a relatively stagnant number over the years. Anyone who wishes to make any changes, I'm sorry, not be, feel that budget's a very sound budget to operate the coming in.
And do we have a motion on the floor? And seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded. All right, open the floor to discussion on this warrant article.
I have amendment to make to this article. Here's the copy on the official town form, copy for the town clerk.
And amended article statement is to amend budget line 4,445.402, if I'm understanding correctly, to be $1,600, this is an increase of $100. And would you like me to read the reason as well? The reason to amend is to provide a $100 donation to the Moose Mountain Regional Greenways Organization, MMRG, on behalf of the Brookfield Conservation Commission and the citizens of Brookfield. Do we have a motion on the floor to take up this amendment? And do we have a second? Seconded. Seconded. All right, and open the floor for discussion on this amendment to article 15.
I'll give, the Conservation Commission has voted a couple months ago to donate $100 to Moose Mountain Greenways, which I've got brochures, if you don't know what it is and you would like to know what it is, but it's our local conservation group. In the past, as many of you know, we used to put $500 every year into a conservation trust fund, but we found that there were a lot of limitations on what we could do with that money, and we decided, it got up to about $5,000, and we decided that we used some of it to, for the forestry management plan on the town reserve, which I'm going to talk about a little bit later in the meeting, and that's a shameless plug for what I'm going to talk about in a little while, is, and we took the rest of it and we gave it back to the town, put it in the general fund, so we weren't utilizing, we weren't using it. The Moose Mountain Greenways Organization provides a lot of benefit to the town of Brookfield. If you have, if you have interest and questions about conserving your land, they'll work with you, they put on a lot of educational programs, they, in the last few years, they've become very active with children's education, they've got a program called Mooseys that takes kids out like in the, in the wintertime with snowshoes, and they do identification of animal tracks, and they do stuff like that. So we felt $100 was not a huge amount of money, and an appropriate amount to support them in lieu of what we used to spend $500 a year on to support the conservation of it. So this particular line item is, that I'm amending was what was, it was an original $1,500 for, excuse me, for Central Anthony HBNA Hospice, but it was the line item that the treasurer and the selectman recommended I do for this time. If we do it again next year, it'll be its own line item, so it's separated out, it just didn't make it by different time. So the Conservation Commission is 100% approve in favor of this, and we urge you to vote for it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I put the amended article before the floor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the amended article 15 of passes. And just as a point of order, that's the correct budget line, everybody agrees on the correct budget line, any more? All right, great. Okay.
Point of order, Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
I believe that the amendment has to be voted on before the article is voted on, I think you have to have two votes there, most of them.
I believe you're correct. So one we voted to have the amendment, be part of it now. Any discussion on the amended article before the floor? Thank you.
Sure.
So the, so the new budget will be $1,231,178, zero cents.
Correct. So I will read the whole thing now. So to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the selectmen's recommended sum of $1,231,178 for the town operating budget, said sum does not include special or individual articles addressed in this warrant, majority vote required. We already had a motion, I believe, that was seconded for this. Any further discussion from the floor?
Marco Brian, I just have a quick question on the public safety. Love the fireplace, used to work at Wakefield, but it seems it's jumped up pretty significantly since '16, we were like 200,000, now we're at 400,000, what's changed? So they're billing us by percentage of their thing, and how's, how's the bill coming in for this?
When we're getting the bill in from Wakefield, we're getting billed for new equipment, we're also getting billed for additional officer, not just officer, PD, insurance, so we're getting billed for this item that we weren't billed for in the past, but one of the biggest things is basic capital reserves for new equipment that they're anticipating for public safety, and the other thing is the, the health insurance.
But we kind of leased out.
I understand, and.
Just kind of trying to clear our virtual account.
And it's one of the things that we, in the past, we've let people know what our options are, and everyone loves having Wakefield as our PD and fire, and we want to pay them premium for it. The new, like I said, the new town administrator, the new crew there definitely need to show that everything that they're paying for, we're going to cut shares off.
So there's some that was caught on.
Recently. More recently, over the past few years.
But before, we're living in a grid now, it's.
We were kind of scared by us not getting hit with some capital reserve, and I believe their insurance plan was something that, they got hit as well, and it's, you know, it's definitely, they had to pass along.
Thank you.
Bear in mind, they, a few years ago, they were all volunteer fire and rescue, and they're, they're full of employees now.
But they're not our employees, that's my only point is, we don't have a say in hiring, pay, or anything for their guys, and I love Wakefield, we used to work for them, but we're kind of, we're leasing that, we could go to Wolfboro, wherever we wanted to tomorrow, if we wanted to, so. We're, we're paying all the money, and I understand their capital reserves.
We could set out on our own fireplace and bury ourselves.
We, 100%, we could spend millions and billions on buying fire charts, so I like their service, I just wondered why it's jumped 200,000 in a couple of years, that's all. And I understand they weren't really keen with the pen before, then now they realize that the expense is on their side too, so.
We pay 12% of their budget.
That's what I was.
And basically, the winter population, we run 712, there runs up to like 5,000, 6,000 in the winter. We talked about going to the summer population, and of course, they're not interested.
I was looking for a 1% figure actually, man.
12, 12.1.
Every year is, is pleased.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, are you ready for the question? All right, hearing any further? All those in favor of amended article 15, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and then article 15 passes. We're now at the other business portion of today's town meeting, I know that there's a couple people that wanted to speak today, at least, that Bob Survasic wanted to say something on behalf of the Heritage Commission.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
The other floor.
Bob Survasic, on behalf of the Heritage Commission. When you approached the building, I guess you've noticed there's some blunting hanging on the windows. I'm not really sure if you all know what that means, or what that represents. Very special year this year, 2023. This is the 200th anniversary of the building of the townhouse, built in, built in 1823. Built in, built in eighteen twenty-three. Not only that, back in March of eighteen twenty-three, the first town meeting was held in the building. So it's a very special year for us, the Heritage Commission. We have a, a series of events planned throughout the year. I believe Susan has handed out, we have a flyer. If you don't have that, make sure you, you grab one. Beginning next month, we have a series of historic talks by local historians. We have part of those. We have the annual ice cream social. We have the, the town barbecue. And we're going to, we're going to top it off with the, the Christmas breakfast. Make sure you grab a flyer, keep an eye on the website. The other thing we have before you leave, we want to wish the townhouse a happy birthday. We have a, we have a birthday cake that's in the bag. And before you leave, have a slice, get a cup of coffee, rub elbows with your friends and your neighbors. Very, very special year. I mean, you're a part of history. Two hundred years, you're sitting in this building. Thank you very much.
Bob, I brought props. Well, thank you all, thank you all for coming to town meeting, by the way. And I'm going to put a shameless plug in for the Conservation Commission, but for all the boards and commissions in town. All the boards and commissions have openings for alternates. Some of them have openings for members. You know, we, we're the town and it takes all of us to volunteer and to be part of it. So if you want to come to a conservation meeting, they're on the first Wednesday of every month at six P M. And, and the, the main message I want, I'm not going to do too much. I'll be around after if you have any questions. But we're called Brookfield for a reason. We've got a lot of water in this town. One of the cool things that, especially for you newer residents might not know, we have three major water sheds that are headwaters in Brookfield. We feed the Branch River, which feeds the Seven Falls, which feeds the Scataqua, which empties into the Great Bay of New Hampshire or Portsmouth. We feed the Merrimack, we feed Lake, first Lake Monmouth, then Lake Monoposaki, the Monoposaki River, and then the Merrimack. So water from Brookfield winds up down out at Newbury Port, Massachusetts. We also, at the very top, and that's what this yellow is, at the top of this, we feed the Saco. We go down through Pine River, through Pine River Pond and Pine River. And water here in Brookfield winds up out, out at Sacoma. So a long stretch of the New England coast has water from Brookfield going into it. So kind of an, I think we're one of the unique towns then. We have a lot of water in town. This is a quick map. One of the things that you might not, many people might not know about, but the municipal water system in Wakefield, the wells are here in Brookfield. And we, and they're surface wells, they're only like fifteen feet deep. It's all that new work they're doing to put the new water lines and, and all the digging up the town of Wakefield. That water comes from Brookfield. And we're responsible, we have a responsibility for making sure we don't pollute it at the surface because we already had one incident a number of years ago where the pub and the market and everything downtown Wakefield was shut down for two days because of points worth pollution because of a colide spike that came from a property in Brookfield. So we have a responsibility to protect that all over town. And last but not least, another little fact that I think most of you know, but you might not. All the green and a little bit to some extent, the orange on this map, these are all protected areas and conservation. They're either directly owned, this conservation land, some of it owned by the state, the Jones Brook up at Mountain Lake, and now the Ellis Hatch Reserve. A lot of the rest of them are, are property where the owners put them into permanent conservation easement. You can go walk on those. We have a, I don't know what the current percentage is, but at one time it was like twenty-two or twenty-three percent of the town's land area was, is in conservation. And we've added some property to that since then. So that number's probably grown a little bit. The orange spot is something that you may or may not know about. That is the town reserve. That's a two hundred and thirty acre piece off of Lightyear Road, off the old, old Governor's Road that the town owns. It's not in conservation per se, it's town-owned land. We, as the town, can decide if we want to do, we want to build a school there, we want to do something with it down the road, we can. But it's effectively open public land and it's got a lot of some historical stuff on it. And it's an interesting place, great place, go take a walk. There are roads throughout it. And just recommend, if you want to know anymore, I'll be around after the meeting. Again, I'd bet brochures, the Moose Mountain Greenways, if you're interested. But first Wednesday every month, six P M, come and join us and we'd love to have you. Thank you.
Question from Frank? Great, good question.
Frank, do you know if there's an age requirement for joining appointed committees?
The pardon?
Is there an age requirement for joining appointed committees?
Not that I'm aware of. That would be, you guys do the appointing, so that would be.
Just so people can ask you.
I'm not aware of one, you mean like eighteen years older?
Right.
Yeah, I'm not aware of it.
For elected positions, yes.
It would be in the R S A's and I'm, I think there is actually for elected position.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, and that might vary from board to board and commission to commission.
If people have any age, I don't know, the.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you. Oh.
Thank you.
My selectmen's representative is reminding me that, I lost the first one. Yeah, reminding me that I forgot the plug. On Earth Day this year, which is Saturday, April twenty-second, we're going to revive a longstanding tradition that Dick Peckham helped start, Town Cleanup Day. We'll be here from ten to twelve. We're going to have bags for you and gloves, pick up. You can, you can go pick up your robe, volunteer, pick up the robe near your home, bring the bags down here and we'll haul it off to the dump for you. And if you find any big stuff, you know, along the roads, don't empty out your houses. If you find anything along the roads, you can bring it down and we'll, we'll take it to the dump area.
Just to keep the record clear, the Heritage Commission is also sponsoring on April twenty-second, our first historical moment presentation. And that will be here in the townhouse, beginning at ten o'clock. And it will have beyond the history of the townhouse.
Right, so a lot is going to be going on. A lot of that's going to be going on. You can clean up your robe, bring your bag in to us, and then come listen to the Heritage Commission talk. So there's a lot to do for the town that day. Thank you.
Yes.
And English, just to add my other question, but two or three people here asked whether we get anything from Wakefield for the water.
Yeah, for our water.
I'm sorry, I wouldn't be hearing anything when we say that. I refuse to hear it, but.
Several people here asked, and I just want to ask out loud, do we get anything from Wakefield for the water that they take from us?
At my, my knowledge, it would be a selectman, I don't believe it.
Labor, labor. No, we do not. The only thing we tax for R S A is the pump house. And we tax the pump house, but we get nothing for the water.
Thank you.
On the floor.
Brooke Sacher, the deputy ambassador. I need to, just a slight correction there. We don't tax the building, we tax the land. So we do get some money from Wakefield property in, in our town. But we don't get change for water. We do tax it for the land, you know.
Thousand dollars?
Duck number.
Thousand dollars.
Excuse me, tear it off here. Who tests the water? How did they know it was necolide? Did they test it in Wakefield?
The, they're called, I can never remember, it's funny, the, the, it's not municipal, it's the, something water district in Wakefield, and yes, they're responsible for all of that. And they're, they're supposed to be monitored and all that kind of stuff.
So what prompted them to test it?
Pardon?
What prompted them at that point to test it?
They, I, I'm not familiar, my guess is they, they should be testing, I would think, every day or, you know, at a rate, and they picked it up. Yeah.
Just curious, how often they test it? Thank you.
That would be the, as I understand it, it, it covers the entire downtown Wakefield area up to the historic area. And it's about a third of the residents in Wakefield get their water from that, to get municipal water. There is one house in Brookfield that gets its water from that, is, is in on the system. The very last house in Brookfield going off on that.
Thank you.
Any other business? All right, seeing none, I believe that Richard Sacher was.
Thank you. This is, this is Richard's last official duty as a, as a selectman. So from, from the town of Brookfield. You're done.
Are you in the fight?
The plate from the post in Brookfield that says, Richard Thorens. In recognition of six years of service as a selectman in the town of Brookfield, New Hampshire, twenty twenty-three.
All right, that concludes our meeting. Thank you very much for taking it easy on me on my first one. And the two thousand twenty-three town meeting is adjourned.
This is really official. I, James P. Coles, solemnly and sincerely swear.
I, James P. Coles, do solemnly and, I think your last part.
Sincerely swear. And affirm that I will bear faith and true allegiance.
And affirm that I will bear faith and true allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
And the state of New Hampshire.
And the state of New Hampshire.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, James P. Coles.
I, James P. Coles.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties.
Good God, that I will faithfully and impartially discharge all of the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As town moderator.
As town moderator.
For a term of one year.
For a term of one year.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of this Constitution.
Of this Constitution.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Holy crap.
Yeah. Now we have to do that over and over and over again.
There's safety in numbers, right?
Each one of you is swearing for a different office.
Fill in the blank.
Yeah, fill in the blank.
Wait, I think I can do this. Okay. I, state your name, and everyone just go in a row and we'll start with that. I, state your name.
I, Edward.
Roberta Hall, Susan Wyskey.
Edman Ingalls.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm.
That I will bear faith and true allegiance.
That I will bear faith and true allegiance.
To the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire.
To the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire.
And will support the Constitution thereof, so help me God.
And will support the Constitution thereof, so help me God.
I, insert your name.
I, Edward.
Roberta Hall, Susan Wyskey.
Edman Ingalls.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
Diligently and impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties incumbent upon me as.
And perform all the duties incumbent upon me as.
Hold it in. And perform all the duties.
And perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me as.
Incumbent upon me as.
Selectmen.
Selectmen.
Cemetery trustee.
Trustee of the trust fund.
Planning board.
Planning board member.
Member.
Right. According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeably, agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of this Constitution.
Of this Constitution.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God.
The laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Congratulations. Well, thank you.
Oh, thank you for serving.
Congratulations.